See, half heard the Chair of the Board, and we'll now start this meeting with a roll call of our Board members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Avery.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German. Mr. Hafer. Mr. Heckman. Mr. Heinel. Mr. Hinton.
Aye.
Mr. Halipka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGuinness. Mr. Pirlo.
Aye.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren. Ms. Wolfson. All right, waving. Okay, thank you.
I'm here too, Nancy.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Heckman. Now, please join me with reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Bensley, is there any changes to the tentative agendas published?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. In the March 23rd, 2023 email, you received draft minutes from the March 16th meeting. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the draft minutes?
Yes.
Are there any corrections or additions? If not, may I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated?
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. First on our agenda is the introduction of the Bedford Property Major Subdivision, which is Growth Tier Three. Ms. Taylor Bensley from the Department of Planning and Mr. Chris Mudd from Venable are here tonight to explain why the item is being reviewed by the Board and to provide an overview of the development. First, please join me in welcoming Ms. Bensley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, good evening, Planning Board members. My name's Taylor Bensley, and in addition to being the Planning Board Manager, I'm also a Development Review Planner within the Department of Planning. This afternoon, I will briefly introduce the Bedford Property Major Subdivision to the Board. The purpose of this presentation is to provide information on why the Planning Board needs to review the item, the scope of the Planning Board's review, and a brief overview of the project and the Department of Planning's review. Following my presentation, I'll turn things over to Mr. Chris Mudd from Venable, who will further present the project, and then the Board will be asked to schedule a public hearing on the matter. So, the Annotated Code of Maryland Environmental Article Section 9-206 and the Annotated Code of Maryland Land Use Article Section 5-104 outline that any major subdivision located in a Growth Tier Three area must be approved by the Planning Board prior to final approval by the county. The approval needs to come before the final county approval of the plan. Growth tiers identify where major and minor residential subdivisions may develop and the type of sewage disposal system that will serve them. A parcel divided into four or more lots is considered a major subdivision in Baltimore County. Our growth tiers were developed in response to Maryland Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of 2012. Growth Tier Three allows major subdivisions on individual onsite disposal systems with the recommendation of approval by an approving authority, which is the Planning Board. Minor subdivisions on individual onsite disposal systems are also allowed on Growth Tier Three properties. Section 326-102 of the Baltimore County Code outlines the intent and purposes of adequate public facilities. The purpose of this title of the code is to provide a predictable planning environment for the provision of adequate infrastructure, roads, public school facilities, and recreational space by requiring residential and non-residential projects to pass certain tests as a condition of development approval. The Annotated Code of Maryland Land Use Articles Sections 5-104D and F outline the requirements of the Planning Board review, stating that the Board must hold at least one public hearing on the matter and that they shall make a recommendation by resolution of the Board. Section 5-104E outlines the scope of the Planning Board's review. It states that the review by the Planning Board shall include: One, the cost of providing local governmental services to the residential major subdivision unless a local jurisdiction's adequate public facilities law already requires a review of such governmental services; and two, the potential environmental impacts, sorry, the potential environmental issues or unnatural resources inventory related to the proposed residential major subdivision. A document breaking down these review items was shared with the Board via email on March 23rd, 2023, with the remainder of the meeting materials, and these items will be talked about in greater depth by the applicant. The Bedford property is PAI number 08-0904. It's a proposed major subdivision on West Seminary Avenue between Falls Road and Mays Chapel Road. The subject site is near the St. Paul's School for Girls and the Korean Presbyterian Church of Baltimore. The site is approximately 21 and a half acres and is outside of the Urteil. The site is Growth Tier Three, which triggers the Planning Board's review. The property is not served by public water or public sewer. The development, if approved, will be serviced by private well and septic. The map on the screen right now shows the Growth Tier designation for the site and the surrounding properties. As shown on this slide, the site is zoned RC5 rural residential. Surrounding zones are primarily RC5, DR1, and RC2. The subject site is currently a vacant wooded lot. It is primarily surrounded by single-family detached residential dwellings plus one institutional use and one religious use. This is the existing conditions page from the submitted development plan. The applicants are proposing six single-family detached dwellings. The lots are proposed to be approximately 1.9 to approximately 6.4 acres in size. The dwellings are proposed to be accessed via a private road. There's no builder tie-in for the project, however, each dwelling must meet certain performance standards as far as architecture. The Department of Planning will have the opportunity to review the architecture for each dwelling prior to the issuance of any building permits. The developer has already completed the Concept Plan Conference, the Community Input Meeting, and the Development Plan Conference. Those meetings were held on February 15th, 2022, April 12th, 2022, and March 1st, 2023, respectively. Now, the developer is seeking review by the Planning Board due to the property being Growth Tier Three. The development will have a hearing before the Administrative Law Judge on May 18th, 2023. The Planning Board's recommendation on the plan will be sent to the ALJ prior to that hearing. Following the hearing, the ALJ will issue an opinion and order, which will approve or deny the project. The Department of Planning commented on the project during the Concept Plan and Development Plan stages. We will also offer written comments ahead of the ALJ hearing in May, and we will testify at that hearing. When reviewing a major development plan, the Department of Planning comments on the appropriateness of a project in terms of the Master Plan 2020 and any adopted community plans, any waivers or variance requests, school impact, architecture, site layout and design, amenities, open space, signage, lighting, etc. The Department of Planning is in support of the development, however, we did have a few outstanding comments at the time of our last review, which was during the Development Plan Conference. To give a brief overview, those comments included technical corrections to the school impact analysis, a note that the project still needed Planning Board review/approval, and then we were requesting some additional information on the trash and mail collection areas, the entry gate and pillars, and the stormwater management, plantings, and fencing. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Chris Mudd with Venable. Mr. Mudd will provide additional information on the project and items specific to the Planning Board's review, and then we can take any questions at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Bensley. Mr. Mudd, are you ready?
I am ready. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board. Good to see everybody here and look forward to seeing everybody in person in a few weeks when we have the public hearing. Thank you, Taylor, for that explanation. I wanted to give a little bit more of an explanation of the project, and then certainly we're here to answer any questions. So, for those of you who don't know me, again, I'm Chris Mudd. I'm an attorney at Venable, a Malanius zoning attorney, represent the applicant in this matter, who is the owner of the subject property. And both, there are actually two individuals and their families that own the property in the form of an LLC, but Mr. Clay Goodyear and Mr. Dan Callaher, who are both attending in the attendee section this evening, are the owners of the property, and they intend to be two of the six residents of the property as well. So, they're not only doing this, they purchased the property as a bit of an investment, but they're also purchasing it for their own respective homes. Also with us today are some folks from Morrison Ritchie and Associates, or otherwise known as MRA. That is Mr. Mike Coughlin, Jared Barnhart, and Catherine Barnes, who are all part of the design team that worked on the development plan that was presented by Taylor, or at least a portion of which, and it's also part of the package that we submitted in advance of this hearing. As Taylor noted, and I'm going to actually share my screen, and before I get into sort of the substance of the matter before the Board, I want to explain a little bit more for those members who might not be familiar with this area. So, the subject property, this map is from Baltimore County's My Neighborhood website, and the area that I'm now, can everybody see the board? Okay, great. The area that I'm using my mouse to mouse over here, that's the subject property here. So, again, the roads aren't called out here, but this is Falls Road that runs north-south in this direction. This is Seminary Avenue that runs to the east from Falls Road and across the site from Seminary Avenue. In this direction is the main entrance to St. Paul's School. This is St. Paul's School that I'm now mousing over here. And I'll talk a little bit more about what you're seeing in the form of land uses, but one other factor I want to mention is that the Urteil, the urban-rural demarcation line, runs approximately in this area where I'm mousing over here. So, it's just south of the site, and then once the Urteil gets to Seminary Avenue, it just runs, sorry, over to Mays Chapel Road, then goes up Mays Chapel Road a little bit, and then up north here is the Urteil. So, essentially, this area here where I'm mousing over and over to the far west of the, and north and west of the page are all outside of the Urteil, and everything that is essentially due south and east of the site is inside the Urteil. And as you can probably tell from the land uses, it's pretty evident where the Urteil begins and ends because there's a whole lot of smaller lot subdivision that is south and east of the site, and then also sort of northeast corner of the site. And then, otherwise, the site's surrounded by what I'll refer to as large lot subdivision. These are all larger lots. This is all RC5 zoning that is due north of the site and even south of the site. West of the site is RC2, which is where St. Paul's is, and there are large lot subdivision that occurred years ago under a prior zoning classification of RC5, south of the St. Paul's site. So, and sorry, one other used to point out is that there is a church use that's here just directly east of the site at the intersection of Seminary Avenue and Mays Chapel Road here. So, the site is surrounded by a whole host of uses, including a whole lot of residential, both large lot residential and then a little bit farther away, these smaller lot residential sites. As Taylor mentioned, we are seeking a six-lot residential subdivision. The site's approximately 21.2 acres, which would yield a total of 10 lots, but this developer is only proposing six. Because we are in Tier Three, mapped in Tier Three under the Baltimore County tier maps, we are required to come before the Planning Board for this request today, which is approval of a major subdivision, which is a subdivision that exceeds three lots. So, a minor subdivision is three or fewer lots. A major subdivision is anything above three lots. So, we have a major subdivision that's proposed within Tier Three, which brings us before the Planning Board today. Your scope of review as Planning Board members is to determine whether or not this is appropriate evaluating two items: the cost of providing local government services to the residential major subdivision, and also the potential environmental issues associated with the subject property. I'm going to switch now. Can everybody see the separate package that I have here? Okay, great. So, this, thank you. This is a black and white version and slightly narrower scope of what I was just showing, but this is again to zoom in a little bit and show you where the subject property site is on the first sheet, and then I'm going to stick on this sheet for one quick second. So, as I mentioned, the site's zoned RC5, and we're surrounded by large lot subdivision, and this gives you an aerial that shows some of the homes that are immediately east and north of the site, as well as the church property that's due east of the site here. I mentioned the Urteils just below the site, and otherwise, the property is surrounded by a mature road network that exists in this area. We're proposing six new single-family homes that will really not generate any significant amount of traffic. It has a total of 76 average daily trips. And in the peak hour, for anybody who is familiar with how traffic studies work, the peak hour is the hour of the day, both in the morning and in the evening, where the largest number of trips occur during that hour. And that peak hour in our traffic analysis shows that there are six peak trips in the AM and seven in the PM, which means that during the largest hour in the morning, there would only be six trips, and that would be one trip into the site and five trips out. And in the evening, it's seven trips, which would be the reverse. It would be six trips in and one trip out in the evening peak. So, a very small amount of traffic is proposed to be generated. The site is, is, sorry, it is about, we're about 2.3 miles from the Brookenville Fire Department, which is the local, the closest local fire department that services this site. The site is zoned for Ryderwood Elementary, Ridgely Middle, and Delaney High School. None of those schools are projected to be overcrowded with our school impact analysis. They are all under the 100% capacity numbers. I'll give a little bit more detail about that as we move forward. Let me move on to this sheet here. "As a consequence of developing this site, the developer is required to place buffers along any streams that may be on the site, as well as to provide forest conservation." And what this exhibit is meant to show you is that of the 21.5 acres of the total area on the property, 9.2 acres, which is all the area indicated in the dark green, will be preserved in perpetual environmental easements. That 9.2 acres is a combination of forest buffer and forest conservation easements, and that equates to, as I said, about 42.7% of the overall site is going to be perpetually preserved as a consequence of developing this site. "Given the existing density of housing in this area, the six new homes will not have any appreciable impact on the provision of county services that already are in this area on a regular basis. There's no public water or sewer available, so there will be no cost to the taxpayers of the county relative to public water and sewer. All schools, as I mentioned, have plenty of capacity for the six new homes. Ryderwood Elementary is at 91%, Ridgely Middle's at 98%, and Delaney Valley's at 94%, all under capacity. The property is located, as I mentioned, within 2.3 miles of Brookenville Fire Company. It's a longstanding and well-established fire company that's provided excellent service to constituents in this area for many years. The six new homes with appropriately sized roads and driveways and internal code-required sprinkler systems will not cause any issues for the new fire company to serve. Trash pickup will occur along this centralized internal circle area within the development." These notes here, which I'll zoom in a little bit, indicate where trash pickup and mailbox, mailbox mail delivery will occur interior to the site, and this entire road on the internal portion of the site is a private drive. It's under this labeling here, but it's labeled as a private drive, which means that this is no, there are no new public roads proposed by this development, so there's no new public road maintenance and no new, including paving maintenance as well as snow removal and things like that. Let's see. Even within, one other point I want to make about this slide, even within the development envelope, we've colored these other lighter green forested areas. The developer's going to work to maintain as much of the existing buffer in these areas as possible. These are not areas that are perpetually, are proposed for perpetual conservation, so I don't want the Board to think that these areas are necessarily going to remain in this precise configuration, but it is meant to show you that the developer is attempting and intends to maintain a buffer between the neighbors and themselves. And so, in addition to the 9.2 acres that will be permanently preserved, it's anticipated that even more will be preserved, albeit not in a perpetual easement. Also, by keeping the roads private, as I mentioned, much of the effort was taken, or much effort was taken to minimize impervious surfaces within the development. If we were to propose the public road to public standards, that would have meant a significant amount more of disturbance and impervious area within the site. The private road enables us to taper that down quite a bit. All lots share this common entrance. None of the home sites will impact the proposed environmental easements, which again cover about 42% of the property's total acreage. The RC5 maximum building coverage requirement in the RC5 zone is 15% of any lot for building coverage. All of our lots far exceed that 15% maximum permissibility. The developer in preserving these 9.2 acres worked very hard with environmental protection to ensure that the areas that were preserved were the highest quality forest stands on site, and environmental is also approved well and septic reserve area locations within the site as part of our, as our efforts in the development plan process. Stormwater management is going to be provided on this site. There's no stormwater management that exists to date, and there will be stormwater management when we move forward. The county and state stormwater management regulations mandate the use of environmental site design, ESD, to the maximum extent practicable on site. There will be a combination of small stormwater practices that serve each of these lots, as well as a larger stormwater, submerged gravel wetland stormwater facility that is at the base of this site. If you were to be on West Seminary Avenue looking into the site, the topography slopes upward from West Seminary Avenue, so the natural fall of the site allows the placement of a stormwater management facility down here to capture all of the stormwater that exists in this site. Because this site is within the Jones Falls watershed, this stormwater management facility is going to be designed to handle the 100-year storm. So, it'll be a very robust and significant stormwater management design, and ultimately, the design is, will be intended and will be required to mimic natural hydrologic conditions. That is, we have to mimic the amount of runoff and the rate of runoff that exists today through the stormwater controls that are going to be in place. So, in summary, we're using the environmental site design practices in all area of the site, and we're going to be providing stormwater management that will satisfy and meet all county regulations and requirements. And we'll cycle quickly through the other exhibits, just so we know what we provided and why. The next couple of pages here on this slide are the actual development plan as submitted, and I won't belabor these, but they show a lot of information and notes on Sheet One. Sheet Two shows existing conditions of the site. Sheet Three shows the proposed conditions, including the environmental easements that we mentioned. Sheet Four, again, shows more detail in the proposed conditions, and Sheet Five is just a breakdown of the lot layout to make that a little bit clearer and less busy compared to the other sheets. The final sheet in our package is a summary, and I won't go through all this and belabor it, but a summary of everything that I just explained to you today. I think we've demonstrated compliance with Section 5-104 of the Land Use Article in that we're not going to have any appreciable impact on any local government services to the proposed major, the services that would be provided to the major subdivision. And then, with regard to environmental issues, both through the preservation of at least 9.2 acres of the site and at least 42% of the site in perpetual easement, as well as the provision of stormwater management where none exists today, we think that we've more than satisfied the requirements of the code, and we ask the Planning Board to recommend approval of this major subdivision. With that, we'll be able to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd, and thank you, Ms. Bensley. Board members, do you have any questions or comments at this time? Please raise your hand and we'll call. Mr. Heckman? Mr. Hafer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Mudd. So, this is sanitary that's being treated on site, correct?
Yes.
And so, how is that going to be done? And being so close to a stream, is Depp's concerned about that? Is there going to be any environmental waivers required?
No environmental waivers are required for the proximity of the septic areas to the stream. So, the septic design is actually a very tedious exercise, and Mr. Coughlin could probably explain a little bit greater detail than I can, but you have to be very cautious about having septic reserve areas upland of wells, for example. You have to be within a certain distance of wells. You have to be within a certain distance of stormwater management facilities, and you have to be within a certain distance of environmental facilities. So, there are no environmental waivers that are required for purposes of the septic reserve areas. There is likely to be, and we're still sorting this out, but there's likely to be what's called an alternatives analysis for, maybe, it may be a portion of the stormwater management facility and a portion of the road to be within the buffer. They're not within or in close proximity to the stream itself, but they're within the buffer itself, and an alternatives analysis is basically a requirement to demonstrate that there is no viable alternative for that particular element for a road or stormwater management facility, which is the case here, given the location of the stream and the ability or the limited ability, with one road frontage, the limited ability to serve the development in that respect. Thank you.
Mr. Hafer?
Mike, is there anything else to mention on the septic issue, or did I cover it?
I think you mostly got it, Chris. Only quick thing I'll add on the septic bit is we have to do perk tests as well of the existing soils that are out there, and so the soils have to perk at certain rates in order for septic systems to be feasible, and those tests have been performed and the desired, the minimum perk rates have been achieved for this site.
Mr. Hafer?
Hi, I apologize if you covered this earlier here, but I've been having some network issues. Did anybody either formally or informally reach out to the adjacent neighbors just to give them a heads up of what's coming so that they're not blindsided?
100%. And first of all, I love your shirt, by the way.
Thank you. It's opening day. I don't have an Oriole shirt, so this is as close I can get to something festive.
Love it, love it. So, yes, long before the applications were even filed, the property owners went and met with the neighbors, and they've continued the dialogue with the neighbors. So, we've been, had, and I'll actually, my client is listening, and I don't think they're here to weigh in, but I'm going to ask them to text me how many meetings they've had, so we can get that on the record, please.
Any significant pushback, any significant concerns, any, anything that we should be aware of in terms of community association pushback, or anything that might be invisible to us right now in terms of pushback?
Yeah, understood. So, so one thing, I'm going to, I want to take a little bit of a trip down memory lane or visit a little bit of history. So, I was involved previously with a proposal on this site for a large church that was proposed, geez, it's probably going on eight to 10 years from now, eight to 10 years or so now, and that development was extremely, you know, opposed with a lot of venom, and a lot of the people there were concerned about the amount of clearing. They were concerned about, you know, any number of things, and mainly- They were concerned about, you know, any number of things, and mainly, and traffic was a big concern that people had at that time, too, particularly given the size of the church and the number of parishioners and so forth. At the time, we were having community input meetings and, and all of the community involvement in that case. People basically said, you know, this, this should be residential. This is what this site is begging for. It's more appropriate to be residential, and that's really what it, it should be. And so here we are proposing a six lot subdivision, four lots, and I don't know whether you heard this part, but it's, 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 has the density in its zone to allow ten, and it only proposes six. So the scope of what the neighbors are, are facing, if you will, now versus what it was, is far better. And I think that the general concern of what, what's going to happen in this site is, is significantly reduced. It's not gone by any stretch of the imagination. As you can imagine, any neighbor, when you have something going on next door, is interested in what's going to go on. There's concerns about change, right? And so some of the neighbors behind the site have concerns about what they're going to see when looking into the site. And so our client has been working with them to try and ameliorate those concerns and to do things like ensure them that their views are going to be as preserved as possible with the retention of as much, of many, as many trees as possible. But that's been really the only issue that I think that we've encountered. And I, my clients have listened and they, they've cooperated. They've met, had four to five in-person meetings, multiple emails. And, and actually, the, one of them said four to five, the other thinks six to seven. So maybe about a half dozen meetings we'd have with the neighbors, and we continue to reach out to the neighbors. We've, we've shared with them, for example, you know, hey, we're going to file the, we're filing development plan this week. Here's your copy, as opposed to the normal copy they get in the mail through the process as required by law. So it's been a significant amount of outreach. I can't promise you that we've resolved every concern, and I'm sure we haven't. But I think that generally speaking, the feeling in the community is relief compared to what it was before.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Mr. Warren, do you have a question?
A question and a comment, or I guess two questions and a comment. So first question, doesn't St. Paul have public water? Didn't we move the Eardle to have them have public water?
Yeah, so I can, I can answer that. The Eardle was not moved, but they do have public water, which occurred by way of what's called a special exception to the, to the master water and sewer plan. And the reason that that happened was because there was a fire that was there a number of years ago, and it was determined that the well service was just insufficient from that perspective. So they got permission for public water. They do not have public sewer. They're on septic there. There are, there is a portion of St. Paul's site along, I'll share it with you, actually. Yeah, I can show it. Bear with me here.
Just stick with the questions, please, so we can get to all the people tonight.
I'm sorry?
That, that's my, the second question I had was, wasn't the county sued because of its discriminatory practices by not allowing the church to move in there? Wasn't there a lawsuit that we end up settling as a county because of that?
Yeah, not on this site.
Not on that site, okay.
No.
And then, you know, the, the last comment I would make is that, you know, this is on a major thoroughfare that leads within a mile from a major exit on to a major high, several, two major highways, one being eighty-three and two being six ninety-five. So this is, this is not going far off of our major highways. The fact that this is, in fact, outside the Eardle is insane to me, so that would be my last comment.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Are there any other questions or comments from the board before we call for a motion?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Okay, who's speaking?
Howard.
Howard, you got, go ahead, Howard.
Chris, my one question, I guess, is looking at the long driveway and a pretty wide driveway. And also, you mentioned no services. I thought, is it private trash that you're going to be picking up? And who's going to maintain it? What kind of declaration, how is it just going to maintain that road?
Yeah, good question. So this is actually going to be public trash. The, the applicant and their engineer went and met with representatives of Public Works, and they worked out a comfort level with Public Works to be able to come in because there's the circle within the development to actually have public trash come in there. And it was, it, part of the determination was that it was actually safer to get the trash vehicles off of Seminary Avenue and, and into the site. And they were comfortable with the design, and it was, and, and there's a, a letter. In fact, I think it may even be on our development plan, or certainly a note on the development plan that reflects that.
Again, the maintenance of the road is not county, though, you're saying?
That's correct. Private, private maintenance, the only county public service onsite will be trash pickup.
Any other questions, Mr. Perlow?
Just, I guess I'm a little concerned only having trash trucks, major trucks driving down this road that is going to last twenty or thirty years and, and be replaced. That's my concern.
Yeah, understood. To the extent that there's any wear and tear, that's on the property owner, not the county.
Thank you very much. Is there any other questions or comments? If not, may I entertain a motion to set a public hearing?
Sure. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board set a public hearing as specified under annotated Code of Maryland Land Use Article Section five dash one oh four C regarding the major subdivision development plan known as Bedford Property, P A I zero eight zero nine oh four, for Thursday, April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three at five PM.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Thank you. All in favor? Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. As a reminder, the public hearing will be in person on April twentieth. The board is tentatively scheduled to discuss and vote on the matter immediately following the public hearing. Ms. Bensley will now fill us in on legislation recently passed by the county council following our last meeting. Ms. Bensley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill ten dash twenty-three zoning regulations uses permitted in the RC two zone, catering halls converted from dwellings for the purpose of permitting by right the conversion of dwellings to catering halls in the RC two resource conservation agriculture zone under certain circumstances, setting additional restrictions and limitations under certain circumstances, and generally relating to uses permitted in the RC two zone. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Ms. Bensley. This is the conclusion of our agenda for the night. Our next meeting of the planning board will be on Thursday, April twentieth. The meeting will be in person. Now, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great night, folks.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.